Okay, let's get started. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, I just, we do have Mr. Tommy Price here today to share with us little modification to the site that you presented before council a couple of months ago, maybe further than that. And I think you have your consultant with you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council. My name is Mark Kine with Land Design. What we're coming forward to discuss tonight is just a minor modification to the rezoning site plan which you have in front of you. What we're specifically looking at is the stick of lots that was at the very northern edge of the site. As we've gone through and started engineering this project, the location of the steep slopes in that area along with the floodplain just made it really cost prohibitive to even construct these homes. So what we're proposing to do is we're relocating, we're not going to build that street and eliminate that northern entrance. We're not going to change the total lot count, still going to be 196 homes, but we've relocated them in the southwest, or I'm sorry, southeast corner of the site and extended that road across the power line easement. So that's the modification we're requesting. In addition to that modification, as one of the conditions of approval from the rezoning, we had the option of doing either a berm out front or a wall. And if we decided to go with any kind of landscaping other than the wall, we had to bring forward that landscaping plan too. So what we're proposing along the entire frontage is an eight-foot berm from Bontera Village Way. On the home site side of the site, the home sites are actually probably about 12 feet below the top of berm. Berm's going to be heavily landscaped, it's going to be a mixture of arborvitae and Virginia pines, has some large maturing trees, some other grasses, but should provide a pretty thick buffer. So we're just here to answer any questions you want to have.
I know you had some land there for a park.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still there?
Sure.
Not in the area that you're looking at. I will, I didn't, since council wasn't interested in it before, we weren't real concerned with it, but as I said to Council on McIntyre, I will talk to Dean, it may be that that area up top, just switch him.
When you say up top, what part of top you mean? You have a mouse mic that he could probably use to point, just so that we can understand? Thank you, Mike.
This area up here totals about 5.8?
About six acres.
Yeah, just under, just under six acres.
And is that a, sorry, Mr. Coane, I just hijacked your question.
Oh, go ahead.
I apologize. So that available, that area would be available, could be available?
Could be.
Right.
Like before, I don't want to make any promises that I can't keep. I didn't know there was still an interest in it, so I will talk to the owners about it tomorrow.
What did you do with the, only because I don't, what did you do with the land that you were going to leave out?
We had to, when we took those lots out, which took them...
Point.
Yep, yep. We extended this road through here and picked up these lots here. This was...
David, you might want to look at the back because he's pointing at it back.
Well, I can see it.
Oh, with the mouse?
Ah, sorry.
He said point, so.
The previous plan, this was a cul-de-sac here, so we extended this.
And this was the area. So it started, and you'll notice you would get way more lots than are in this than were up here. The reason is because when we actually started to the land design, the floodplains encroach farther than the lots.
Basically, it's same number lots, same number houses, just a little configuration change.
Yeah, on the northern side, we would have had building pads on top of a 14-foot wall, whereas these lots are much more level, easier to maintain over the long run, so.
There's really no difference other than the fact that...
Just reconfigure a little bit. And actually, we think it makes for a better neighborhood.
So I see the space where the power line is, no concern from the proximity of that last house there on the end bottom to the power lines?
You talking about this one here?
Yes, yes, sir.
So the closest tower is all the way over here, so, and then the next tower is here, so we've got a pretty, we're actually about as far as you could be from both towers.
What's the distance, not just the towers, but what's the distance from the line to the front of the house there?
Um, 50, 60 feet at least.
All right. Mr. Burhans, Rox?
Hi.
Sorry. Question for you, in terms of the, I guess, you've seen this, right? This recommended change here, or this?
I have.
Right. My question to him is just in regards to the last house at the bottom and the proximity to the power lines. There must be some regulation or some limit in terms of how far it can be, or how close it can be, I can see.
From the overhead power lines?
Yes, sir.
So certainly, I believe those are Duke Energy Transmission Lines, and those would have an easement associated with them.
Okay.
The developer would have to comply with the easement restrictions. I don't know what this, where, you know, how far out they go, but they would have to comply with those as part of the construction of the home. And certainly, if they could not comply, then they would make the lot unbuildable.
Thank you.
I think it's actually, you know, like, actually what?
It's owned by Duke.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rox. One more question for you. That property at the top we were talking about, in terms of that, is possible if the developer is interested. Is that in, from the terrain, is it something that could, you know, like, what type of difficulty would the town have in terms of if the council so chooses in the future to put a park there? What kind of difficulties would they have? In other words, is the site challenged? Is it, it's not a hill?
It's going to be steeper. I mean, you couldn't put like a playing field, I wouldn't think you'd put that there, but you could certainly have walking trails through there. It's navigable, navigable as far as a walking trail.
Okay, so that's really what would probably most likely end up there. All right.
Let me ask you this, Mike. Would you guys be interested in putting a walking trail in there, or is that something that...
We already crossed that last time.
Okay, all right. I was just curious, because I'd much rather see you guys put that water. I mean, if it's as simple as a walking trail.
Because the thing is, if it's not, if it's not be, if it can be, go ahead.
Mr. Coane, I will talk to you.
Yeah, and you know, I know that that may even tie into the, I think there's a trail that goes, or used to be.
And we are showing, we are showing this walking trail here that's coming up on the edge of this space.
There used to be a trail back here.
And, yeah, we've got one going all the way through the backside of the site here.
There it is.
You see it?
Yep.
It might even tie in or get close to it, or...
Well, that, we've already got one real, just right on the edge of it going around.
How close is it? Do you know where the Boy Scout camp is? Is it anywhere close to that?
No, sir.
I know it's further out, but I didn't know.
It's on the other side of Bontera.
Gotcha.
Any questions, Eric? We have, I have no other questions.
I do have one question. Tommy, that area where we added the house, the lots, we moved them when we moved the lot, it's a low area from the roadway, about, what, six, seven feet, something like that?
You're talking about which area? I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the area, the new area of the lots next to the transmission line.
So where we've added lots?
That's right.
They are going to sit probably a little bit lower than the road. Yeah, we are, everything on this site falls away from the roadway.
Right.
So by the time you get down here, you're probably four to five feet below that roadway.
Okay, any drainage issues?
Drainages? No, it's actually really flat. It's been a little tricky from that aspect, but we've been able to make it work.
And just for council, I think the preference here, two entrances rather than three, which is good. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
That area at the lower right, where the transmission lines began at the road?
Yes.
From what I'm hearing, the terrain is lower for that first house?
Uh, for, yeah, for all of them.
Is there a, is there some type of BMP or anything going to be put there?
Everything on here flows down to a BMP on this side of the line.
Okay.
And we've also got one back here. So everything will be collected in a system and diverted down to the low portions of the site.
Yeah, I like this better.
Rox, did we cover the berm and the landscaping last time when the developer proposed before council? Did we do that?
Yeah, that's correct. So there was a, as part of the original conditional zoning approval, there was a fairly detailed design for the berm, and it specified that a fence or wall would be constructed. However, the door was left open, that if they wanted to pursue a landscape solution for that berm, they could do so subject to council approval in a format similar to this. And that's one of the items being requested this evening.
No. I'm sure if they have other questions, they will pass them on to Patrick, who will pass them on to you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor and council, your mics are now live, and we are live online.
You ready, David?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone please rise, pledge of allegiance. Chief, can you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you'd remain standing for our moment of silence, and if you would, please keep the Sneed family in your prayers, as Ms. Emily Sneed passed away this week. She was a prominent business owner, lifelong resident, and did a lot for this community over the years. Okay, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I see there was a note. Who has them, Mr. Coane?
Yes, if we have it, I don't have it, but do you have the resolution? Does anybody have the resolution?
I have the resolution.
Not that resolution, I'm talking about the ABC Board.
I do, right here.
You got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to add that to the, I guess we could add that to presentations, put it on the bottom.
Presentations?
New business.
Action board, comment.
I guess the council needs to...
So want to put it on the new business?
Yeah.
Item 10D?
E, right?
Well, I don't have...
No, 10E.
I don't have a 10D.
Yes, E.
E, E.
Oh, that's, sorry, I have an old one. All right, 10E.
Do you have an extra?
Any other, any objections to Mr. Coane?
No.
Any other additions or deletions? Mr. Sidik?
Do you need one?
No, 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 do we have all the additions that we wanted to add?
Mayor Alvarez has the additions to add to the agenda, thank you.
We need an, yeah, the council has to add them, Kathy said.
Old business, like they add developments.
Okay, on that.
To 9B.
9B developments, okay. And?
10D, resolution in support of light rail.
And a 10D. Okay, are there any other additions or deletions? If there are not, I need a motion.
So moved.
To approve the amended agenda. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to presentations. First up is our new business presentations. The first up that we will be welcoming will be Pro Printing, Kerry Russell. Welcome.
Hey.
We have invited you here as a new business to welcome you to our community.
And I appreciate it.
And to give you a minute to tell us about your business.
Okay, I'm Kerry Russell, I'm the owner of Pro Printing. I just opened in Indian Trail on February the 1st. We do mostly apparel screen printing, but we do have banners, signs. I have a trophy shop in there too, so if you need trophies, plaques, awards, anything like that. We're local, right across from Johnny K.'s restaurant. I do local deliveries, you don't even have to come into the shop if you don't want to. Emails, phone calls, you let me know what you need. We can email back and forth proofs, I bring it over to you, it's that simple, but I appreciate the opportunity to come. I do have some samples and some brochures. Would it be okay if I give those to you guys?
If you would, if you can give them to the town manager, that would be great.
Okay, and there are extras, so after you guys have one, we can just put them at the back door for anybody else who cares to have one as well.
Thank you.
Welcome to Indian Trail.
Thank you.
Nice bags you came, I mean, I like that. It did here, anyway.
If you make way over here, as a token of welcome to our town, we'd like you to accept this plaque, and wish you years of success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for joining us.
Next up is Kitty Cove, Monica Sanchez.
Hello, I have some presentations for you guys, if you would like them. I am opening a drop-in daycare in the Sun Valley Commons area. We're going to be across from Cineholic, right outside the movie theater. Essentially, what we are is going to be, children can stay for up to four hours while their parents run errands, they go on date night, they do, they take classes or anything, go to the gym and stuff like that. We are STEM-based, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. We're going to have a nature-themed facility, so we're really excited to bring nature into the classroom and offer a quality short-term childcare option as opposed to the babysitter or the commitment and contract of traditional daycare.
Thank you. If you would, you can leave your presentations here, and we'll take one and pass it down.
When do you open?
We are currently doing the outfit, so we're hoping for an April, early May opening.
Welcome.
Where are you located?
We are in, off Old Monroe Road, in the Sun Valley Commons area, where the movie theater is. We're right outside the, in the new development there.
Didn't there used to be one there? Didn't there used to be?
There used to be one in, by Sun Valley Cafe, yes. Stay and Play, that's actually where I started. So that's where I got my first job with children. I've worked with children for 10 years now. I just graduated from UNCG with my bachelor's in early childhood education. I am pursuing my master's from Clemson, so I'm very excited.
Very good.
Thank you.
And we also, welcoming you, wishing you years of success.
Almost right from the movie theater, so, Seer Hall.
If you ever need any of us, we're here at your service.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I'm the owner of the Unique Boutique, Dawn Hill. We have furniture, home decor, clothing, jewelry, accessories, where your one-stop-shop for gifts. We have cards, we'll wrap it for you, and you're out the door. We will be located, hopefully, in about two weeks, actually, right there at the Kitty Cove, right in front of the movie theater. So you guys just need to come in and see what we have to offer.
Any questions for her? No? Come on up. Welcome. Welcome to Indian Trail. We're at your service. And we also have Atlantic Pin Striping, but I don't see Mike here. Oh, come on up. I do see Mike here, hiding in the back. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. How you doing? My name is Mike Montamuro, this is my wife Laura. We're the owners and founders of Atlantic Pin Striping and Montes Pin Striping. We've been in business since 1985, been in Indian Trail for a good while now, six years. We also reside in Indian Trail, and we're glad to be a part of the community. We did open a facility right down the block here on the left-hand side, we're finally established in there. It looks like we've been there for years, and we're almost out of room. We're happy to be able to bring some unique vehicles to Indian Trail. We recently had four Ford GTs that actually came into Indian Trail from NASCAR team owners, NASCAR drivers, and there's 400 of those cars made this year nationwide, and we've had four of them done right here in Indian Trail. So we're proud to represent...
Which we did. Clear paint.
Yeah, clear paint, protection film, it stops rocks. You can literally take a wire brush to any part of those cars, and you will not damage the paint. So if you ever walk by your car and you see a chip in the hood or a chip in the bumper, we have film that'll stop that from happening. So if you're ever in the market for anything like that, that's what we would do. We also do commercial vehicle wraps, color change wraps, signs, banners, decals, hand-painted pin striping. We are the owner of a franchise company, which I designed and patented a tool to do hand-painted stripes with. The multitude of that work is done on new car dealer lots, where we improve the quality and eye appeal of new cars, and afford the new car dealers a new profit margin that is beneficial for everyone. If you ever shop for a new car, everybody's got the perception of that, the dealer just wants to line their pockets, but in this case, they actually give you a high-quality product that does have a lifetime warranty, and we do stand behind it for as long as you own the car. So long story short, we're in a multitude of different businesses, business to business, business B to C, and the franchise space as well. We do have six, seven, seven locations, Naples, Florida to Virginia, and that's all based here in Indian Trail as well. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody? Your world good?
I'd like to say it's a beautiful building from the outside.
Thank you, thank you.
I know you guys have been waiting for a while, but it's, the brick and the facade is very beautiful, and thank you for being so patient.
Absolutely, and we're happy to be patient, and we're happy to get a sign out there if it ever stops raining.
And we'll do our ribbon cutting with the chamber probably sometime in May, so we'll let you all know about that.
And I feel terrible, I'm Italian, I'm from New York, and I came from, I came empty-handed. If you know the culture, you never go anywhere empty-handed, but we rushed out of here to get here, so.
There's a cannoli shop right up the road. There's a cannoli shop right up the road.
Well, Mike. Good luck with the new building, it's great. Painous on the wall?
Thank you.
I know we made your life easy, so.
Yes. My life is over now.
If anyone's seen the car driving around the county with the air show on it from Monroe, with all the airplanes that Pete Havannick drives in, Mike did the rap for that.
And we're about ready to change it again, so.
Well, that's good, more money for you.
Thank you.
That brings us to public comments. I will open the public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. We may not give you three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation, and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or the council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employees' rights to a fair hearing on your grievance. When you step to the microphone and state your name, your three minutes will begin. Beverly Jones. Good evening, Ms. Jones, hope you're doing well this evening.
Good evening. Beverly Jones, 5102 Old Charlotte Highway. I am impressed with how well you are working together, and how professional and respectful you are toward each other. I am also impressed by how well you listen to the residents. Remember, listening is one thing, action is another. I appreciate everything each one of you do on a daily basis. The town council represents the residents of Indian Trail. Several items will be coming up for a vote this year that will put you to the task on how well you represent the people. As I have stated several times on record, I am totally against the super street project, U-4714, because this will affect my property drastically. I would like to request that each one of the town council, naming David Coane, Shirley Howe, Mike Head, Jerry Morse, and Marcus McIntyre, make an appointment with me to come out to my residence and observe how these super streets would affect my property if they are installed. Mayor Alvarez went above and beyond the call of duty to have 46 Fox News to come out to my residence on February the 19th, 2019, at 11 o'clock a.m. Ms. Caroline Walker, who represented Fox News, toured my property in very much detail. I expressed to Ms. Walker my deepest concern of how the super streets would devastate my property. I stated to Ms. Walker that installing the super streets on Old Monroe Road is not the answer to the solution. On this same day, Mayor Alvarez was present and was also interviewed by Ms. Walker. Mayor Alvarez expressed to Ms. Walker his major concern for my property. He expressed to Ms. Walker the traffic problem that we already have at the intersection of Old Monroe Road and Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, and if the super streets are installed, this traffic problem will be much worse. He mentioned to Ms. Walker his concern that you have four schools which will be greatly impacted by the construction of the highway. Another concern that Mayor Alvarez emphasized to Ms. Walker was that the NC DOT plans are to close off the left-hand turning lane on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, allowing no traffic to be able to turn left to proceed toward Indian Trail. Mayor Alvarez stated to Ms. Walker that this was not a good decision made by the NC DOT. Mayor Alvarez, I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank you for taking your time and representing me and assisting me in every way possible. In closing, to the town council, I would like to leave you with this thought. Please do not take the Old Monroe Road project lightly. Please take the Old Monroe Road project very seriously. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Joe Boudette? And Crystal? Just state your name and...
All right. Hello, my name is Joe Brundret, and I'm here to talk about two community events that are being hosted by me, Crystal Behollick, Aleah Nguyen, and Mayor Michael Alvarez. The first, the first community project is the VFW Taco Night fundraiser on March 29th. It will be at the VFW on Indian Trail at 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it will have tacos, beans, chips, salsa, rice, dessert, and drinks. Admissions are $7 for adults and $5 for kids. And we are also looking for donations of food or raffle prizes, of which...
Will be raffling off while we're there, at the event.
Yeah. So we'll be looking for donations of food, raffle prizes, and attendees, and also for plateware and silverware to help out.
And then our second one is going to be at the Rage Room. And then our second one is going to be at the Rage Room. I'm just going to start this off. The second one's going to be at the Rage Room, and it's going to benefit Cindy's Hope Chest. Cindy's Hope Chest is an organization that's local to Indian Trail that helps women who are battling breast cancer with their daily expenses, and just going out there and helping with the motion on financial needs. Oh, yeah, Joe's got a flyer here.
Yep.
Go ahead and finish telling them about that one.
All right. So, the event is called Rage Against Cancer, and this is a fundraiser for Cindy's Hope Chest, an organization that is out to basically get, to get rid of breast cancer. The events will be held at the Rage Room, of which you can smash things as much as you would like. The Rage Room's at, on Independence Boulevard, and it will take place April 6th at 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The admission costs will be $25 at the door, or $20 if you reserve a space before Friday, March 15th. Tickets will include smashing fodder, food, drinks, and gift door, gift card door prizes in excess of $200. There will also be raffles featuring local businesses there.
So, yeah, we would like to see everybody come out to the event. It's April 6th again, from 2 to 6, right at the Rage Room, which is right behind Farm Hill Sheik, up on Independence Boulevard, right across from the Walmart in Indian Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
They just, the VFW fundraiser, the money raised there that night will go back to the VFW for veteran services. Natalia, I can't pronounce your last name. I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Natalia Shavchenko, and I live at 6707 Rose Drive. It's a Rosemary Park subdivision. It's an older subdivision, and me and my neighbor here to request the pavement of the road, because Rose Drive is not a paved road. Before we built our house, I did some research, and they stated that Rosemary Park, as a, as a community, was not, is belonging to Indian Trail City. So, the roads belong to the city as well, and I understand that the city is responsible for the maintenance and pavement of the roads. Do you have any? And we, as residents, we filed a petition for the pavement of the roads.
Twiceed.
Right. And we just wanted to, to ask your attention to this matter and do some research and investigation. As far as I know, some of the history of this subdivision, that there were two builders who wanted to develop this area. Something happened, they never developed the area, but they just sold lots to private parties. So, technically, we don't have homeowners association, that usually when you develop a subdivision, then the builder would turn over their ownership to the homeowners association once they establish one. But in this case, the subdivision was never developed as it is. It was sold to private parties, and technically belongs to the city. So, we wanted to bring to your attention, because there are, I think, seven...
Seven houses, yeah. They said, well, we got seven, that they would pave the road. And that's been quite a while now.
Right. So, we do have seven houses, residents living there, and with the weather being as it is right now, it's kind of...
Getting rough.
Muddy.
Sure is.
So...
But we'd appreciate all the help we could get, because it's getting beyond, beyond passing whatsoever, just about. It's a real narrow road, which I understand it's got to be 18 feet if it's paved, which there's plenty of room on each side.
Right.
So, all the help that we could get on this sure would be appreciated.
Thank you.
All righty.
And...
I have a question.
For him?
For them, yes.
Can you break to council rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay. And I signed up for public comments to be a proxy for a UNC, for a college student. So, I have his right here. Taylor Bab is holding a fundraiser this Friday, March 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at New Covenant Baptist Church at 5114 Rogers Road, and it is $8 a plate, and it benefits the Journey of Hope, which is a cross-country cycling trip that brings awareness and support to those with physical and mental disabilities. And they will, and the trip will include service projects and financial supportive camps across the money. The money raised is to help them with their journey. They have mapped out a journey across specific camps and areas and built, and places that provide services for those with disabilities, and as they cycle and arrive at these places, they will provide financial help. They will help prepare their buildings, their camps, and any other items they can provide for them before they get back on their cycles and ride across their map to their next journey. Taylor is a former Boy Scout in Indian Trail and now attends UNC Chapel Hill, and it's his fraternity, Pi Cap, Pi Capify, that will be doing this journey. So, again, Friday, New Covenant Church, Rogers Road. It's for a great cause. Counsel, if you take one and pass one down? Thank you. This time, I'll close public comments and invite the council feedback for public comments. Mr. McIntyre, you did express a need to ask a question.
Yeah. Before you leave this evening, if you can give your information to the town clerk, Mrs. Queen, both your names, your telephone numbers, and your email address as well, in that way, once we do some research, we can kind of get back to you on that. Now, that's really all I had, so.
Okay. Ms. Cone?
Is anybody aware where this, what, what street this is?
Yes. Mr. Cone, the request came to my office, and we're dealing with that right now. We do have a policy, and we're going to turn that policy to our attorney just to look and see where do we fit in regard to the petition, the number of petitioners, and all that stuff. So, our engineering department will be in communication with you soon.
We appreciate it much.
Yes, sir.
And another question is, is it a, is it in, is it a town road?
It is an Indian Trail.
I know it's an Indian Trail, but is it a town road, or is it...
Yeah, it is a town road.
It's not a private road?
Private right now, but it falls under the policy, it falls under our policy of taking over the roadway and paving it, but we have certain criteria, like 50% of the property owners have to sign the petition, and also there is some contribution from the town and the property owners themselves. So, we're going over that right now, and we'll be sharing the info with you soon.
Good.
Any other questions? No. I will close the public comments and move on to the law enforcement update. Captain Cobble?
I'm going to be brief, about three hours worth of talking I got here. I passed out January and February some breakdown charts for calls for service, just for you guys to look at later on. I know you don't have anything to do when you get home at night. You can look over all these reports and paperwork, and the, I did come up with a few maps, just of a couple of things of note, and plotted out on the maps on the north and the south side for just three categories. Larceny and theft reports in February, and reported motor vehicle break-ins, and also for motor vehicle crashes in town. So, I gave you a kind of a snapshot picture of an aerial overhead of north and south side of the town, and just kind of pinpoint plots on where some of that activity is occurring. So, in February, we had combined 922 calls for service and 2,489 self-initiated activities. Obviously, for those that are listening on the Internet, the self-initiated activities are traffic stops, business checks, preventative patrols, things that somebody doesn't have to call and request, something that we do on our own. So, you see a suspicious person or suspicious vehicle parked behind a business at night, you get out and check on that, then that's a self-initiated activity in our CAD system for the cars. So, just a couple of things on, on the average response time combined for February was nine minutes, 58 seconds, and I want to be real clear in that that's from the time we get it to the time we get there on average. And so, you get something like an incident like we had on Saturday morning with an armed robbery of a commercial business, then it's two minutes and some change. You get something where Shirley may call and say, "I was out of town," and somebody knocked over a mailbox with another vehicle, then I put that into a different queue from the dispatch standpoint. It may be 12 minutes, 15 minutes before we get out there. So, all kinds of factors go into how our dispatchers queue those things up for the next call for service that comes in. But just because it says nine minutes, 58 seconds, doesn't mean that if you call and David's over there with a, with a leaf blower blowing stuff all over your clean car, that we're not going to come running and be there as quickly as we can. But obviously, life and death situations take precedence. Also passed out a, each one of you a flyer. This is a continuation of our, of our looking for a missing person, Mr. Forrest Treat, that I talked to you about the last time that I was up here. From the north side of town, had walked off on the 25th of February, and our detectives are still working that case and still interviewing and talking to some folks on that matter. The, you know, just still trying to keep that, that out there in the media, still trying to keep his face out there, and hopeful that we can have a good resolution for the family and be able to figure out where he went off to for a little, little break right now. So, Saturday morning, I mentioned a little bit ago, we had a 7:00 a.m. robbery that occurred at the Aldi grocery store. We have pretty much, feel really confident that we have linked those up with a series of Aldi grocery store robberies from around the state, being in Lexington, North Carolina, Rocky Mount, and Fayetteville. All of those had particular things that were of note that each time took place, the same, same type thing. The MO for that incident was the same matching those other ones. So, our investigators are working and getting pieces and details from those cases. One of our detectives that came out on Saturday morning up here and responded out is also a member of our Regional Violent Crimes Task Force, and so Tyler Kale came out on Saturday morning for us, because that's something that, once we identified that, hey, this is not somebody that most likely lives right around the corner and, and, you know, did spontaneous robbery. This is somebody that is putting some planning and forethought into doing something regionally. Then, we went ahead and got Tyler involved in it, and so hopefully that'll pay off some dividends once we can get some other case details put together for some other areas. Probably the, the most proudest thing I want to tell you is that we've gotten some education for Josh Russian and James Godwin. So, over the past six months, Josh Russian and James Godwin, both of them sergeants for you guys, have been attending North Carolina State University's Law Enforcement Executive Program, and not for the entire six months, because I don't think they would have lasted in college that long, especially together. But they've gone up for two and three-day periods at the time, a little over 20 days' worth of training that they've received, and tomorrow they graduate. So, they'll, I know David will be proud that they'll both be graduates in North Carolina State University, so. But we are proud of them for their commitment and their time that they've spent away from their families up there learning, and I think they're going to bring some good valuable information back here to us if we'll just listen to them sometimes. So, see if I got any questions. Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. If there's no changes or questions, I'll need a motion to approve.
Motion, please.
Ms. House made a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item eight, our public hearing for conditional zoning requests for CZ 20150113, ordinance number 309, request for amendment. Rocks, the floor is yours, Senator.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be before you. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Harris Teeter Fuel Station that's proposed at the Austin Village Shopping Center. This was being proposed as part of a modification to the previously approved conditional zoning for that property. The applicant for this is Harris Teeter, and the proposal is to contemplate this as an accessory use to the grocery store within its parking area. Just to make sure everyone's up to date on the location, the red outline is the Austin Village Shopping Center, where the Harris Teeter is the anchor. The parcel is outlined in red. We have Chestnut Lane here, we have Potter Road here, and if you can see the little blue square, that's where the fuel station will go. Here, this gives you just kind of like a site plan view of what the fuel station will look like. It's what I would refer to as maybe a limited service fuel station. It has a direct relationship to the grocery store in terms of sharing points and things of that sort, and getting discounts with your VIC card. It has approximately five pump stations and some related equipment that you normally find in a gas station, like air and water and other features. It will have a little employee kiosk in the, in the center here that will be staffed during most portions of the day, but not all during the 24-hour period it will operate. This is an architectural rendering of the proposed fuel canopy, as well as the employee building. I think the compliments go to Harris Teeter, as well as the design team at Kimley Horn in terms of trying to make this blend with the existing shopping centers. You know, it has a very unique architectural style there, and I think they, they hit a home run in terms of trying to blend this with the existing development in the area. Just as a reminder, this shopping center is within a mixed-use area, Village Center overlay of the comprehensive plan, which would be supportive of this. As part of our major modification process for conditional rezonings, there is, there are two community meetings that are held. Five people were in attendance on a meeting that was held in November, and all five people that attended were supportive of this project. Staff has found that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and proposes, promotes the goals of land use and housing and economic development, and find it to be a reasonable request. And ultimately, the planning board recommended approval of this, and I'd like to go ahead and just read the findings that they supported into the record. The proposed expansion of the conditional zoning district to permit the fuel station will allow an expansion of commercial land uses within town to help support a more balanced tax base. The proposed expansion of the conditional district supports appropriate land uses at a location identified within the Austin Village master plan as a mixed-use area, and will help facilitate creation of an envisioned shopping center within the area. The planning board further found that the classification is reasonable request and is in the best interest of the public, because it promotes business expansion and growth within an area of town and is compatible with surrounding uses. So, to wrap this up, as, as is the process, so to just kind of wrap this up, as, as our process requires, there will be two motions and votes required by council. One, to approve the consistency findings, as I've read into the record, and the second to reach a final decision. I'll certainly make myself available for any questions. We also have a member of the Kimley Horn team here, if you have any questions of the applicant.
Counsel, have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Morse.
Can you put, bring up the map again? Okay, let's see. So, how are, how is the entrance and exit to the gas station?
So, all, so ingress and egress to the shopping center will be internal, so there will not be a new external driveway onto Potter Road, and it may be reflective somewhat on this sketch here. So, this is, you can see a little bit of the parking area from the Harris Teeter Shopping Center. Sorry, it doesn't show up quite as well on the screen, but as you can see, this is the drive aisle that it'll take access off, access off of, and then Potter Road would be roughly right here, where I'm waving the mouse. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? This time, I will open and close the public comments, or don't one has signed up to speak, and bring it back to council to make the two motions. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to make the required consistency findings, as read into the record by staff.
Mr. Morse has made the motion to make consistent, required consistency findings, as read into record. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We need a second motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Morse has also made the motion to approve as presented. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Motion approved. Thank you. Thank you, Rocks.
Sure.
That brings us to old business, item 9A, fiscal year 1920 budget update. Mr. Wodowitsch? I want you to reach the podium. I yield the floor to you, sir.
Good evening. Good to be in front of you again tonight. Town manager thought it would be a good idea to update you on our process. Letter went out in January from the town manager, basically expanding the criteria we were looking for. We've met with all the departments. I've been doing a lot of budgeting in my day, and... all the departments. I've been doing a lot of budgeting in my day, and I have a really good feeling. A lot of times, department heads ask, you know, we're running out, we want to spend more money. People are actually giving money back this year. So, people are buying into the projects we have. We want to keep our tax rate the same, eighteen and a half. That went out in the letter in January. So, we're, we're looking forward to the retreat to give you guys the numbers. I know we're going to be having charts and, but wanted to tell you we're, you're in good hands. I feel very confident about it. You know, we're on the same team. I think that comes from Patrick. But, people are, I just feel good about it. Patrick, you want to add anything, or?
No, we just wanted to report on the item, just to let you know where we at with the process. So, we completed all the work with the department heads. And the next item is going to be, we're going, come for another session before council, during council meeting, share the graphs with you and show you the minuses and the pluses and where we at. And then after the session, we will look forward to the budget retreat, which will be probably on a Saturday where we present and ask for adoption. The kind of, we're trying this year to lessen the time and as much as possible. So, but at the same time, give you the right information that you need.
Thank you. Is there any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The next informational item will be developments. Mr. Sadek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Presentation, Michael.
Kathy, do you know, is there a presentation for this?
It's the, the two charts and the map, and it's a PowerPoint presentation.
It was the PowerPoint. For which section? I didn't hear you clearly.
It's okay. I could take it with a hard copy. We've already provided counsel with a copy of the presentation at earlier time. Simply, previously, I shared with the counsel a graph that shows the number of apartments, single-family, multifamily, townhomes of any developments that we have right now, whether it was approved in the pipeline or for potential development. The two tables that, that I shared with counsel, they list exactly the number of units for each development. So, we did, we did have a table for apartments. We also had a table for townhomes slash condominiums. Simply, what we're trying to do here is to continue sharing with counsel and our residents the percentage of each type of development. But we're talking, we're not, we're not talking about retail or commercial or industrial. We're only talking, talking about residential. I'm sorry, I don't have this graph right here doesn't have the, the percentages. But the intent of sharing this presentation with counsel is to show you the percentage that we're approaching on each type of development. And from our side, from staff's side, we do now, since we're getting a lot of developments in town, we're getting to a point that we need to make sure whatever is proposed and going to be built within the next eighteen months kind of matches our strategic plans. And when we talk about strategic plans, we're talking about how, how will these developments impact, sort of, it's like a roadmap for strategic goals. So, we, we're looking at how it can be a smart growth, what's the impact on the transportation system, whether we need to widen street between these developments, where they located geographically, do you have, do they have enough commercial, retail next to them? Also, it's a big part of our annexation campaign. What is the impact on water and sewer, police and fire, and solid waste, and et cetera. So, simply, like I said, what we wanted to do, keep counsel up to speed on the number of units, number of developments, and where, where they exist within the town. I think that's all what I have to report. If, if member, if counsel has any questions about any of them, I'll be more than happy to respond to any questions. But simply, Rocks did a, a lot of good work on putting the numbers together. And I kind of packaged it in that graph. That kind of gives you an idea about where we at.
I'm sure there'll be questions after they get the graphs. And I'm sure they'll, they'll email them to you for a future presentation, for an update with their questions, because I don't think there should be any questions at this time. No? Oh, you've seen the graph before? Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to multifamily development update. Patrick?
That was the item on multifamily.
All right. Okay, next item would be the Veterans Memorial update. Mr. Parks. Floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Before I get started, I would like to say that I did meet with Jim and Patrick about my budget, and I did not give any of my money back. So, they must be talking about some of the other departments. I kept all of that. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the Veterans Memorial as we start planning as a staff for the ribbon cutting. As, as you hopefully saw tonight, we've come a long way since you guys were here two weeks ago. Adam and his Public Works team have taken over the project now that the frame is complete. And hopefully, you saw some dirt being poured out there, and we're moving forward in a hurry. We're hoping to have a ribbon cutting in the spring is what we're looking at right now. Assuming that it ever stops raining, we'll be able to move forward on that. And what we need from the community and what we're starting to reach out to people about is we wanted a different groups throughout Indian Trail to really take part in this process. We want our schools to be part of the presentation. We want our civic clubs to be part of the presentation. We want our elected officials to be part of this presentation, to really show the community what it is that they have helped us build. You know, as you know, this is a community project from start to finish, and it's being funded through donations from our civic groups and from residents who have purchased engravings on our loved one out there. And we are going to want all of them to take part in the ceremony once we get closer to that. What we need is council's help in getting the word out to everyone that we do want everyone to be part of this presentation. And we want people to go to our website. There's a link right from our homepage where people can check out more information about the Veterans Memorial, find out how to purchase an engraving in the name of a loved one, a hundred bucks. And, and there's even a demonstration there to show you what that's going to look like. If any residents who are watching us tonight want to come and see it, we, we have a piece of that here in the building. We'd be happy to show them, give them an idea of what their money's going to get and how they're helping contribute to this project. So, we have been very lucky in having a lot of community support. Obviously, the Rotary has been a big part of that, and they're currently working with us to get some more word out in the community. We've already been reached out to by a couple of other groups last week that want to contribute in some way to this project. So, the more that you all can help us share word that we want the community involved in this, the more beneficial that will be for us. And we just want people to know there's still plenty of room out there for engravings. So, if you want to honor a loved one, please come by Town Hall, give us a call, or go to our website. You can put in that information through any of those means, and we are happy to help you in whatever way we can. So, I'm available for any questions.
Will you tell us how much was collected so far?
Last we looked, it was a little over fifty thousand. Is that the last number you saw, Patrick?
That is correct.
Yeah, and, and we know that more is on the way. So, so about a third of the way there.
Still on budget?
Yes. Yes. And still on schedule, assuming that it stops raining, we are, we're good to move forward.
So, the first question that's going to be asked of us when we try to get people to come and support is, when is it going to happen? And I know the rain is unpredictable. When you say in the spring, we're talking May, April?
Well, right now, we are targeting Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Very good.
And that is, we don't want to, we don't want to start promoting that date because things happen. But that is what we are telling people to be looking around that date. We, we fully anticipate we will be able to complete it by then.
I think, I think all prayers will be answered for Memorial Day.
Yes. Any other questions?
Are we going to put grass seed down, or are we going to put down sods?
I will turn to Patrick or Mr. McLean.
We are going to put sods, but we do have landscape beds all the way around, including a lot of flowers and exotic plants. So, in between, we will have favors that residents could walk between the flower beds.
Well, I was originally, when I saw that red dirt out there that, that they're spreading around, so it'd be nice to not, you know, people walking on grass out there.
Yes, sir.
We had talked about a community garden, if people want to come plant out there, but I don't think that's going to work. So, we'll start on that landscaping here very shortly. And that's why it is the Indian Trail Veterans Memorial Gardens. It's going to be very beautiful out there. So...
Mr. Cohen, we, we're trying to remove the dirt that was brought from the fields in the park, and it wasn't good dirt. So, we need to make sure to bring some good dirt that will support our plants. That's what you saw out there.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the Indian Trail Complete Street Update. Mr. Hudziger. Welcome.
Mayor, council, I don't know if you're aware of the history of it, but basically, we started our, kind of our public outreach for this project. And what that means is, we've had two stakeholders meetings with the, you know, the property owners on both sides of the corridor. And so, they, they were done in January and February. And then staff and the town manager decided, you know, it'd probably be a good idea to have individual meetings with each property owner. So, what we've done now, last two Fridays, which is March first and March eighth, is basically have individual meetings to talk about the project. I'm just going to list the property owners that we've talked to so far. First was, this is basically in order when we have the meetings. Mr. Stein and Mr. Devine, which is Indian Trail Pharmacy, Lamar and Donna Wingo, which is Indian Trail Hardware, Todd Price, which is the manager for BB&amp;T, Dr. Gentile, hope I'm saying that right, the chiropractor that's on the Park Road, Indian Trail Road, Jed Lilly, which is Lilly Auction, Don and Rusty Haasfluke, which is, you know, the multi-tenant buildings and it's the sanctuary. We, we invited Dr. Lamb, which is the new owner of the plastic surgeon building that's being built right now off Gribble. We wanted him just to be aware of the project, even though we're not actually doing any improvements in front of his property. Obviously, you know, there, there could be impacts. George Hamilton, Methodist Church, we talked to him. Floyd Halberg, I hope I'm saying that right, Presbyterian Church, talked to him. And then we've got, this Friday, we've got property owner of Simplecon, which is Brian McKeon. He's coming in. And we've also talked to Mr. Woods over at VFW about his entrance because we, we kind of want to do a little modification on that. But, just kind of highlight what we talked about, basically staging. What we want to do is we want to stage on individual properties if they have room, so, so to be away from the roadway and not impact the, the travel lanes. Keeping the driveway access open, you know, if they have two driveway accesses, which is what we're proposing on most of the properties, obviously fix one first, keep access to the properties by the business, while it's in business, and then vice versa. Again, eliminate the mailboxes. I don't know if you've already or not, but you have mailboxes along our downtown. And we obviously want to talk to the post office to get rid of these mailboxes along the roadway. I mean, they're right on the roadway. You don't see that in downtown. We're trying to get rid of it. Kind of like our drainage ditches, we're trying to get rid of. And also, last thing, you know, beautification. We're talking about sign bases, being consistent all through the corridor, planners, if we can have the budget for that later on after the project's over with. And lighting, obviously, we're going to light the corridor after the project. So, that kind of wraps up what kind we talked about. And I'll, and I just want to make you aware of that we have a public meeting at the end of March, the twenty-eighth, here, large community room, blow us from five to seven o'clock. So, we are welcome to show up for that, too. Any questions?
Did you want to go first?
Yes, to add to what Todd said, the reason for meeting with each property owner individually is just to make sure that they allow us to stage on their property and work it from the road back, so that way we will not have to shut down the roadway. That's the main intent. And all of whom we're supportive into our approach. So, we're very pleased with that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That answered your question, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that brings us to new business. Items ten A and ten D appear to be related. Do we want to piggyback them together? Patrick?
I'm sorry, sir.
Items ten A and ten D appear to be related. Do we want to combine them?
The reason why we split them is to allow council member to report on their attendance to CRTPO, MPO. So, if we could keep them separate.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item ten A, light rail transit oriented development. Mr. Head, Mr. Morse, who's going to take the lead?
Well, as you, you guys are aware, I'm, I'm now attending the MTC, which is the Metro Atlanta Transit Commission. And this is where we discuss light rail and also other transit options like cats. So, at the, the latest meeting held last month, I believe, I was able to enjoy the company of Stallings and participate with them in supporting them in their resolution to bring light rail to Stallings. So presently, the Silver Line was approved at that meeting to get out of the planning stage and go into the development stage for Matthews. But additionally, they're going to extend the line from Matthews to Stallings in the planning stages. They're also looking at extending the same line over the Catawba River to Gastonia. So, one of the things about the, the light rail and is it really tries to move people that are in heavily populated corridors and get, and get folks out of their cars. So, we all experience the traffic here and, and how, how long we sit in traffic. There's a finite amount of money out there available for roads. But one of the things that this, the transit does, it, it opens the possibility to another method of transportation. It also, by them extending the Silver Line to Gastonia, or, excuse me, Gaston County and to Union County, is then you get to tap into the federal money because then it's considered a regional rail system. So, right now, Charlotte has had a half-cent transit tax for many, many years, and they've been, Mecklenburg County, I should say. So, they've been, you know, shouldering the, the financial burden. Unfortunately, the light rail's not free. It is, comes with a pretty hefty price tag. But what we're trying to do is, at this point, work with Stallings, work with Union County officials, convince folks if that, I don't know what I mean, folks, convince the people on the Charlotte Transit Commission if it makes good fiscal sense to bring the light rail out this way. You know, a lot of us work in Charlotte, and I know I drive there every day alone. And it sure would be convenient if I could get on a bus or some other mode of transportation. Part of this, the, the light rail, what really hit home is when they hit, they, when they, they move folks from heavily concentrated areas like South Boulevard, UNCC. And along those corridors, you will see quite a bit of economic development, as well as you'll see things like, higher density. So, you know, one thing that, like getting involved in the MTC right now, it's helping me at least become educated on what comes first. One of the things is, you know, identify our corridors. Where do we want to put, where do we want to put people? And where do we, where would we like to see the light rail? And then if you, if you can figure that out, then you can work from that and say, okay, well, this is where higher-density populations need to be, instead of what maybe we're going through right now with, you know, here's a piece of land, okay, let's just stick some apartments or townhomes there, versus, well, here's a piece of land, but in the big scheme of things, maybe that's not conducive to townhomes and apartments being there. Maybe that's more conducive for something else. So, the big thing right now is, I've only been to two meetings. Very excited about it. I'm hopeful that we, as a council, will also do a resolution seeking getting like, light rail this way. It, it will take probably, I would hope, maybe ten years, but it's probably closer to thirty, just the way things move with government and, and the funding, of course. I think that's, that's pretty much it.
Mr. Head, were you adding anything to that?
None of this.
Any questions for Mr. Morse? Thank you, Jerry, for being involved in all of that. Okay, that brings us to the Silver Line Transit Oriented Development. Mr. Parks.
All right. So, this will add a bit to...
All right, so this will add a bit to the conversation that Councilman Morse just had in regard to the Silver Line. As you know, we partnered, the Town of Indian Trail partnered with CATS and a number of other municipalities in our area in applying for a federal grant to study bringing the light rail between Belmont out to Indian Trail. That grant was obtained in the amount of $900,000, and the study is starting to move forward, about a $1.6 million study on what it will take to bring that corridor out to Indian Trail, up to Belmont, connect us all with the airport. We had a conversation with CATS last week about what Indian Trail's responsibility will be in this study. We're still very early in the process. But what we will be doing as Indian Trail, we will be responsible for a lot of the educational and the awareness efforts with our community, let them know what these options may be, and get feedback from them of what they would like to see in a light rail project, you know, how it would benefit them. CATS is going to start moving forward, possibly this month, but definitely in the next couple months, and obtaining a consultant to start studying the corridor, in hopes of having that team onboard by the summer. And then once that happens, staff, as, you know, we've pledged a number of in-kind staff hours to help with this project, we will be providing a lot of information in regard to economic, planning, engineering, stormwater, everything that we can for the possible corridors for this project. We're still a little ways off on that. Once the team comes onboard, they'll let us know what they need, but we have started those conversations with CATS in terms of putting together that information. As you know, last year, we did a study, or a survey, rather, on our website with our residents to see what they would like to see in mass transit, and we did hear from a number of our residents that they were interested in seeing light rail extended from CPCC, where the line was going to stop at that point, out to Indian Trail. So we've already started some of the groundwork with our residents on that. Obviously, this is going to be a very long-range project, as we start working with our residents, let them know what the options are, and then we're going to have to have a lot of conversations, as Mr. Morse said, in regard to what kind of items are we interested in seeing in that corridor, because that is the next conversation that CATS would like to have with us. We'll be putting out some more information, hopefully around June or July, on our website and social media, as this project moves forward. But right now, we are in the wait-and-see part of the plan, as those RFPs start going out, and we hopefully get a consultant onboard. So I will definitely have more information on a later date, but I would urge the community to keep an eye on our website as we start putting out some more thoughts on that. And that is all I have right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. That brings us to the Hotel Room Hospitality Tax. Mr. Sedik, Mr. Evans?
I'll take it, so since Mr. Evans is not here, but simply, the resolution that was approved by council has been submitted to Representative Dean Arp, and it's in Raleigh, so we made it on time, I'm sorry. So we're in good shape there.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, any questions? Nope, okay. That brings us to the Resolution in Support of the Light Rail Transit. Mr. Sedik?
Yes, sir.
Walter?
Karen helped us out this afternoon to get the resolution done, so it is ready, and I'll turn it to Karen for any comments.
Again, this is just a resolution in support of light rail coming to Indian Trail, and a request to make sure that the MTC's planning includes Indian Trail as a potential terminus, as a terminus station, and that this is just a follow-up to exactly what Councilman Morse was discussing and Mr. Parks was discussing. Patrick did ask me to put this together so that we could forward this onto MTC, is that correct? And any others who may be making decisions regarding what will be included in the planning and the future of light rail in the area.
Is this something I need to read into record for them to vote on, or they all have a copy?
Yeah, I believe everyone's got a copy, so I don't think there's a need to read it into the record.
Okay. Counsel, if there's no questions, we'll need a motion to approve or deny. Mr. Morse?
I'd like to make a motion that we do a resolution in support of the light rail transit. Resolution R. 190312-01.
Mr. Morse has made the motion to approve the Resolution in Support of the Light Rail Transit, all in favor. That would be unanimous. Motion approved.
Thank you. This will go a long ways to possibly seeing this happen here in Indian Trail.
Next is the, again, Mr. Morse, thanks for all your hard work involved in this. Next is the ABC Resolution. Who's going to take lead on that? Mr. Morse, is that you?
We have a situation. The resolution will not download. I have it right here on my computer, but I can't seem to get it to pull up. It just says, "Download not available." So I was hopeful that Mr. Parks could possibly perform some magic on this little box.
Is this a resolution that you forwarded to us prior to today, or is that the only copy there?
Patrick had a copy, and he forwarded it to us. This came-
Not in an email?
Mm-hmm, it is.
It wasn't in an email.
Let me see.
It won't pull up.
Well, do I have a telephone?
I do, let me see if I can pull it up.
Pull it up?
When did you send it, Patrick?
I think the day before yesterday, Jim, when you sent it to me.
ABC?
We thought of this.
Some plans go awry.
Give me a second.
What are you trying to pull up?
I'm trying to pull up the Resolution in Support of our ABC, but regarding the board mergers.
So-
I can't pull it up.
Can I speak for a minute on that?
Sure.
Absolutely.
I can? Sorry, so I just got off the phone with Representative Horn, that's who just called, that's why I stepped out, and they're rewriting the bill right now. There's going to be some drastic changes to the bill, in terms of, one of the things, one of the things, one of the things that's going to come off the table is the merger of the county, or all the ABCs in the county, that's what he was just telling me. So within five or six days, I placed the call earlier to him just to sort of figure out where we were with that, how was the legislature looking in terms of passing that, and there's going to be some major rewrite to that particular bill. I still think at some point we should pass a resolution. However, he told me that in about five to six days, if I do not hear from him in terms of sending us a copy of the bill so that we can take a look at and relay back to him what we like and what we don't like in the bill, then we can go from there. But the thing is, he understood that clearly, that we as the town and the ABC Board, of course, were not in favor of that, although they have looked at other states. For instance, I went to school in Connecticut, and the ABC was run independently, or it wasn't any ABC, it was the ABC Commission, but all the stores were run independently. That's not the model they're looking for in North Carolina. But, so as soon as I have that information, I'll share it with council, but they're in the process of rewriting the bill right now.
Is this something we need to table till then?
No problem with that, we'll just do it.
I would-
Since nobody can download a copy?
Yeah, I would table it till then, but by then, we will have new information as well, so.
I've got it pulled up, actually. Awesome.
Okay. Counsel, everybody in favor of tabling this pending update from Representative Horn?
Well, you know, my main objection was, as far as the different components of HB91, was the merger itself of the different town boards into one Union County ABC. And part of the reason for that is that, you know, I'm here to represent, along with my peers, you folks in Indian Trail. And Indian, we have a large population, our ABC store is well-run, and they are profitable, and that is money that is the taxpayers of Indian Trails. What is a concern is that you have smaller ABC stores, like in Marshville or in Wingate, and if you take the Waxahaw Indian Trail at Monroe ABC, put them with Marshville and Wingate, and then they do a five-way cut on the funds going back to the towns, if that's in fact how they do that, then we would really be, we'll take a hit. So that was my primary opposition to that. There are other components to the bill, like in-store tasting, so I don't know where the legislators-
Sunday sales and so forth, yeah.
Yeah, there's some other things, but the biggest issue we have as a council, and that we were opposing this particular bill.
Okay, is that what the resolution's all about? I mean, that's up to council if you still want to pass the resolution and get it to Representative Horn while they're reworking the bill?
I think it would be a good idea to do that if, how do y'all feel?
I think so. One question. I didn't speak to Mr. Horn, what was his feeling? Do you think he would, he would, he was looking for us not to do something?
No, so my, my reaching out to him wasn't because we had a resolution that we wanted to pass, it was really to kind of gauge what is the prospect of this really becoming law. That was really why I reached out to him. I wanted to know if they were close, because it looks like there was a lot of movement on it. And based on the conversation with him just a short while ago, that bill is being rewritten. He said that the reason they filed the bill was that under certain rules, they had to get it in by a certain deadline, and therefore, they filed what they had. He said it's a process that has been going on for the last few years, but right now, it's kind of coming to a head where something's probably going to be done. So they filed it, and immediately, as soon as they filed it, they're in the process of reworking it to meet the, to get in, I think they're in a short session now, right? Right, to get it in in the short session. So based on that, they are going to rewrite it, and one of the provisions, which is the mergers of the original ABC boards or the town ABC boards into the county, that is one provision that they are going to take out. So it's up to us to really decide whether we want to table it till then, or we go ahead and pass a resolution. Do we have a resolution now?
Yeah, we do, and I, after hearing that, I support what Jerry says. I mean, why not let them know that we don't, we don't want it? And that way, if they're going to do it, I mean, want to, at least it's in their head that, you know, if they're going to rewrite it, even if they rewrite it, we still don't want to be part of the county board, we want to be separate. So, I mean, that's my way of thinking. I support, I support the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Head, do we need to read this resolution?
I don't have it all. I've got the bill, is what I have.
Okay, so if the attorney doesn't oppose, can we have them vote on a resolution against the county merger pending the wording of it?
We can, a resolution does not need to be in writing, we can resolve that, you all can pass a resolution stating that-
I've read it.
That, that the Town of Indian Trail opposes the merger portion of HB91, and you could just say it out loud, and then we'll have, Kathy will have the minutes on it, and we can put that into the actual, into an actual document that we can send up.
Okay. Who wants to make the motion then? Mr. Morse?
Yes, well, thank you. Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we resolve not, we resolve to not support the board mergers into a single-county board.
For HB91?
HB91, yes, sir.
Are we supporting the resolution?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Morse has made a motion to hold a resolution in opposition of merging the ABC boards to, out of our control of the municipality in accordance, in HB91, all in favor. That would be unanimous, motion passes.
We'll get, Kathy and I will get a formal document with this information in it, and have it signed and presented as, to the legislative delegation.
Thank you. That brings us to, Patrick, you have any update for us for this evening?
I will be providing counsel and our residents with a report for the last three weeks, but if counsel has any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond to any of them. But what I like to do is to kind of turn it to our Chief of Life, if you could share with us the latest fire county update. Is that okay, Mr. Life?
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate that. They did, they did have a meeting yesterday afternoon, work session with the County Commission, and they're pushing ahead with a communications plan on the 80/20 funding proposal, and that's basically where 80% of your funds come from your district, and then the county provides 20%. So they're starting a communications process of that with hopes of starting FY '21, so June of next year, July of next year. So that will, that will require every fire district to have a tax district installed, so that will, that will come to y'all through that process. So you can expect to be getting some communication on that, I would assume, in the next near future, whatever that plan is. I know the plan starts out with property owners first, and then from there, how that falls to municipal involvement. So every, every district will be getting a tax district. So you have Bakers, and you have Unionville that has a couple of parcels off Price Road in the town, so they'll have to come to y'all to do that. Okay? So the 80/20 plan is what they're pushing ahead with, and under that, I think I'm a neck giver, Stallings will be a giver, you know, Wesley Chapel that has a portion down off of Magna Drive and all down behind Sun Valley, they'll be a giver. So it's just like the ABC Board, exactly what you were explaining, you know, when we split the money up, how does it get split up, you know? So we're giving, we're giving to, you know, Wingate and Marshville under the Fire Protection Plan as well. So it's the same scenario as ABC Board, you know, when you look at it from that aspect. But the 80/20 is the plan that the commissioners chose to move ahead with, so.
Does that mean the fire fees are going to be eliminated now?
Yes, yes, they will be, under this, under this plan, so fire fees will go away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Patrick?
That's all.
Okay, that brings us to council comments.
Unless council has any other questions.
Oh, council, you have any other questions for Patrick at this time? That brings us to council comments.
Mr. Head?
All right, I just wanted to talk a few minutes about the council, the Union County Commissioners Meeting that I attended on March 4th. The way that the commissioners set things up is they, they have, when they're working on a development, approving a development, they have really two meetings. One is a public hearing, which is, that's what happened on the 4th, and then next Monday, they'll vote on it. And the reason I attended was that there is a mixed-use development on Poplin Road that's inside Indian Trail town limits, but is a donut hole, so it's, it's the property of Union County. And in that donut hole, they want to put in 264 apartments, consisting of one to three bedrooms, 70 single-family, and 60 townhomes. So rallied, I think we had a pretty good crowd, we had approximately 15 to 20 people that attended, and then there was five of us that spoke, and we had a person, Carolyn, who I actually talked to today, Carolyn Chapman, who is, lives in Bonterra. She actually was a retired real estate broker, and as well as a developer. She was very good. And then we had Dawn, and I can't pronounce her last name, from Annandale, that spoke. And then we had two members of our Reliable Growth Group, one being Mike Smith from Weddington and the other one being Mike Como from Wesley Chapel. They both spoke, not as council members, but as individuals, and basically, they support not bringing this in. And then with approval from this council, I spoke as a member of this council on behalf. And basically, what we all tried to tell them was that, you know, we really didn't want this development, especially the apartments. If you think about Poplin Road, if anybody knows where Poplin Road is, it's a very small, 1.7 miles. And there's, with this, and then with the development that we've already approved, the Poplin mixed-use on the other side of Indian Trail, Unionville, you're looking at about 3,500 residences that would all be around a 1.7 mile. And I just told them that the infrastructure wasn't there. And I just told them that the infrastructure wasn't there. So, and a couple of things I mentioned was water and sewer, they talked about water and sewer. There's actually two pump stations, and, you know, they're not at capacity, but they're getting close. So I mentioned that, and basically what we also said was, you know, it just doesn't fit the character. So if you have to build anything, let's not take the apartments, and let's just have single-family or townhomes. So with that, what happens next is that next Monday, there'll be another meeting where they vote. And I actually, when I spoke with Carolyn today, she had a great suggestion, so I'm really sending this out to everybody that's listening as well, of sending an email to the commissioners, because we, they typically, they don't have to take public comments at the meeting Monday, but in the past, I've been to the last couple they have, so I'm hoping they'll do that there. But I think the more that can send emails to their website, and all you gotta do is go to Union County, North Carolina, go under the commissioners, the commissioners, and you'll see pictures of each of the commissioners, and then click on that, and then you'll see their email address. So, and I think what we need to do is really just talk about the reasons why we don't want it. I'm gonna go back, and one of the things I'm gonna talk about is that, and you can actually go online and listen to them, and when I went back and listened, I found out that the TIA, the traffic analysis that they did, they didn't do on Poplin, they did on Bonterra Parkway. And if anybody who lives out there will know that there's not a whole lot of traffic on Bonterra Parkway, but it averaged about 5,000. So if you look at what Poplin brings in, the roads just can't handle it. So really, I'm gonna base it all on infrastructure. So I would request that anybody that can attend next week to attend, we've had, and I can tell you what the other Wesley Chapel and Weddington have done, when they come in, they dress with a red shirt on, and that's a protest of saying no. So again, I think it's just something that we need to look at and would like to have everyone's support. This is not working, I don't think it fits in with the character, and I think we have a decent chance of- Their comments, if you go back and listen to their comments, there was some discussion about whether it really makes sense or not. So I think the more we get there, the more we can talk to them about it, the better chance we have. So with that, I thank council, and, yes?
Mike, when's the next meeting?
It's next Monday, it's at 7:00 PM, and it's at the Government Center, Monroe Government Center. And welcome, anybody that can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen?
Mr. Coen?
Thank y'all for coming, and I just wanted to go down the line here and thank the mayor for doing all your, getting all these compliments. I don't know if you're paying for them, or what, whatever it is, you got a bunch of-
Well, my bank account's empty, so I should say something.
Anyway, keep up the good work, you know, thank you for all you do.
No, no thanks needed, thank you.
Marcus, tonight, talked to the state representative on the hotline, direct hotline for Marcus. He's somebody, I'm gonna tell you that right now, he is somebody, so.
I'm nobody, I'm a little-
Yes, you are, yes, you are. And don't think he doesn't have the hotline to trump, too, he can go straight to the president if he wants to. Jerry, thank you for all your hard work, all the stuff you did with the transit, and you and Mike both, appreciate that, surely, you know, I appreciate you more than you know, you're our rock, man, you do a great job. And Mike, thank you for representing the people at the, and, you know, trying to look out for residents of the town. And staff, thank you for everything you do, and it's all good, and I hope to see you next time. Good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
So for the record, I am a simple, low-level functionary. I am not the man, as Mr. Coen said, but Chase, I wanna thank you guys for the job that you guys do. We appreciate you. I left the country about two weeks ago, and I came back, and nothing was missing, so you kept a good eye on things. Make sure that Mr. Coen wasn't over at my house trying to take my lawnmower or something. I appreciate that. Staff, I appreciate all that you do as well, really, really do, all of you, all your staff. When I come out there and I see the memorial out there and how it's coming along in two weeks, I'll say that that's really moving, well, it's looking good. So a lot of people, including, you know, the representatives in Raleigh, for us, they also wanna come down and when we have the opening, so hopefully we can make that happen. Council, it has truly been a pleasure to work with all of you. You guys really do step up and do what's needed. Mr. Mayor, every, anytime I call you, you always answer, I appreciate that, I appreciate all that you do. Patrick, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And Karen, I'm happy that your son is well again. To those listening online, thank you for listening, and everybody have a safe drive home.
Mr. Morse?
I'd like to thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight about your concerns with the town, whether it's the super-street proposed from Monroe Road, or it's your neighborhood street that needs repair. If you don't know this, the thing that I wanna hang my hat on whenever I move on from this job is dealing with the infrastructure. I am not happy at all with the super-street that's out there on 74, when I enter some of those U-turns and there's no lighting, I mean, that's just unacceptable. So as a representative of Indian Trail, of the residents and this council, I plan on going back to CRTPO at the next meeting and taking my three minutes and letting loose. There are some things that are not in our control, but just like tonight that you spoke up, you expect me to speak up, and that's what I will do. Tomorrow night, I'll be at a meeting with, it's CARPO, but this is with the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO with CRTPO, and we are doing regional meetings, and this is to foster a regional approach to our transportation woes. And I used to just think that it was Indian Trail not getting any funding, and felt like we were the only ones suffering, but there's a lot of suffering out there to go around. One thing about this council, as I say, I'm dealing with a lot of the infrastructure, I don't mind going to those meetings, interfacing with Jason Lewis, who's with CATS and the Transit Authority, or Mayor Bailey, Ms. Paxton, but each one of these persons up here have excellent skills that complement each other, just like with Mr. McIntyre, reaching out to our state reps. And you have David, who reaches out to our, the different mayors, and the people in this town. So the thing that just impresses me the most about you guys is you really do care about our citizens. And I can say, in sitting out there where you are in the past, it didn't necessarily feel that way, and I'm very greatly appreciative of you all. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and I hope you have a blessed week.
Okay, real quick, just a couple of quick things. Thank you, David, that means a lot coming from you. But, you know, the feeling's mutual, we know how much you've done through the years, and you've always, and whether you know it or not, you've been an inspiration to me. And I'm sure both David and I can attest to how much this council cares, we've been around a while, and worked hard for this community, and we're honored, I mean, but I think I can speak for they, we're honored with the group that's up here. Staff, you do a wonderful job, Chase, you do a wonderful job, but, you know, sorry, chief, you always get left behind. Thank you for all you and our firefighters do risking your lives every day. Sorry to take your shine away from you, Chase, but, you know, without you, you know, we're in just as much trouble as we are without Chase, so thank you. With council's permission, real quick, Ms. Crystal there left something off. If we could give her 30 seconds to finish up her statement there for the fundraiser, I'm sure you don't mind, real quick. Right, please? Even though I protest against it? Go ahead, I'll give you the rest of my council comments, and I'm protesting dearly because I'm being-
I forgot to mention at the Rage Against Cancer event on April 6th, that we are, Michael Alvarez is going to come, and we're gonna be able to pay him, so for $5, you can purchase a pie, and you get to pay the mayor. I know sometimes, he's an amazing mayor, but sometimes we get frustrated with people, so it'd be fun to just, you know, take it out on him.
You taking the money right now?
Anytime you wanna pay, and 100% goes back to Cindy's Hope Chest, he volunteered for that, or voluntold, whichever.
No, I didn't volunteer, it just appeared on Facebook. But I'm happy to do that.
I think you have $100 up here on council.
Patrick's getting out his checkbook over there. As usual, thank you everyone for coming, God bless.
And Mrs. Powell?
Thank you, it was a good meeting, a nice, calm meeting, and I, what I like is when I go places, people say, "You guys are really, really getting along," and I said, "Yes, we are, and we're getting a lot done" to the staff, manager, the participants that come very often, which is, Jim, we're trying to get that road fixed for you. I don't know, it's just unfair the way it's turned out, but that's another day and another story. And Chase, and Johnny, every time I hear the siren, I think about you.
Just quite often, yeah.
Very close to my house, isn't it? It's a good meeting, and looking forward to getting this budget out of the way and moving on. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a quick closed session, in accordance with NCGS 14331811. Any motion to go into closed session, please?
So moved, sir.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? Okay, two minutes.